Okay, we're all green. So, good evening and welcome to the July 23rd, 2014 Special Call Hearing of the City of Brookhaven Planning Commission. I'm Stan Siegel and I'll be presiding this evening. This meeting has been called on matters pursuant to the Brookhaven zoning ordinance and specified on tonight's agenda. This July 23rd, 2014 meeting is called to order. As a way of introduction, I'll call the roll and have each Commissioner signify, raise your hand and signify their presence. Commissioner Shannon Cameron.
Present.
Commissioner Rob Frankcore is not here. Commissioner John Funny.
Present.
Commissioner Jeff O'Connell.
Present.
Commissioner Bert Levy.
Present.
And Commissioner Caitlin Miller.
Present.
Okay, let the record indicate, we have six members present. Commissioner Frankcore is not in attendance this evening or list. Have we heard from him? Do we know?
He is out of town.
He's out of town, okay. So, we have a quorum and we're going to proceed. I'm going to ask everybody to... Okay, I'm going to ask everybody to please turn off your cell phones or silence them. And let me make a few introductions. We have Ms. Susan Cannon, who's Director of Community Development, and the Assistant City Manager is here tonight. Mr. Ben Song, who's Planner for the City of Brookhaven, is here. We have Amanda Hatton, I can't remember the firm. Jacobs is here. We have Emily Machesk- Preston. Did I get close?
Emily Machesky-Preston.
Machesky-Preston, I got close. Is here. And the firm is...
Coleman-Tally.
Right, Coleman-Tally, which is the city's attorney. And anybody else?
Mike Edelson, the city's GIS manager.
Ah, okay.
And Becky Apter.
And Becky Apter, I'm sorry. We go through this each time and each time I forget someone. So, we have a number of copies of the agenda and related documents should be at the back of the room. If you'll be making a comment tonight, or asking questions, making comments tonight, you'll need to fill out a public comment card before you come up. Then when you come up, we'll ask you to state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we also have Michelle Alexander here tonight. She's with the firm of Pond.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so the Planning Commission is established by the Code of Ordinance of the City of Brookhaven, and our purpose is to conduct public hearings on land use, zoning changes, co-text amendments, and other related matters. The Planning Commission's actions are not final, are not a final determination regarding the matters before us this evening, but only a recommendation to the mayor and the city council, the viewpoint of this commission. We also, we're going to change our process just a little bit, our procedure. There should be a... The procedure should be in the back of the room. You should have copies back there. So, tonight, the Planning Commission is conducting a public hearing on two matters. The first is a hearing regarding the re-adoption of the City of Brookhaven official zoning map, and the second is a hearing regarding the 2034 comprehensive plan. This public hearing tonight is not about the transportation plan, the Parks and Recreation Plan, or the Beaufort Highway Improvement and Economic Development Strategy. Those are very important documents, but they are not part of this evening's hearings. They're scheduled for public comment with the mayor and council, and I don't know the date. Do you know?
August 12th will be public comment on both the Beaufort Highway Plan and Parks and Recreation Master Plan. There will be a presentation to the council on transportation in a work session, and then the transportation plan will come back to the council for a public hearing on August 26th.
Okay, thank you. So, I can, I will, we need to vote on, since we have a change of these procedures a little bit, specific to this. Let me go through them and then we'll ask for a vote of the commission on this. One, we'll open the public hearing at the time so that people can speak. We'll ask the city then to present its report to us and the Planning Commission, and I'm sure the consultants will have a role in that, if not the entire role in that. The Planning Commission members will make inquiries of the staff and its consultants. They'll get to ask questions after they make their presentations. Then I will open the hearing for comments by members of the public. So, again, if you're going to make a comment, we ask you to fill out a comment card and give it to the staff so we can get it in the public record. The difference tonight is we're going to have, each person's commenting is going to have, be limited to three minutes, but we're not going to have any overall limit. You usually have an overall limit of 10 and 10, 10 minutes total for people who are opposed and 10 in favor. Tonight, we're going to, we're going to make sure everybody gets heard. So, anybody who wants to speak is going to get a maximum of three minutes, but you're going to get to speak. You don't have to worry about, well, the crowd. Will then, questions will be addressed, we'll ask you to address any question. We can't answer things up here. This is not a dialogue, unfortunately, or maybe fortunate. It's a time for you to tell us. It's time for you to speak and for us to understand where you're coming from, so we understand your, you know, how you feel about this. After the public has concluded its comments, I'll close the public hearing, and then we as commissioners will deliberate, get a chance to ask questions, and then after we've kind of fulfilled our obligations to each other and to the public and know and feel like we have the information we need, we're going to vote. We're going to take two votes this evening, well, actually three if you vote on this procedure. The first is going to be on the zoning map itself, and there we'll get to vote to recommend approval to the city council as presented by the staff, or denial of this recommendation to city council. I'll also say that if anybody is looking at the map, and if you as a resident have any issues with a specific piece of property, we're not as concerned, I should say, we're not as concerned. We are going to address issues associated with the process and why we're adopting the zoning map as opposed to an individual piece of property. But you as public, if you have an issue with it, we want to know that, and we'll certainly address that. So, we can approve it or, and recommend approval or recommend denial. The second vote, and that's going to go to the city council for their meeting on August the 12th. In regard to the comprehensive plan, 2034, at last night's meeting, that was July 22nd, the mayor and council requested that this commission hold the hearing to obtain public input, but to delay our recommendation, our vote on our recommendation until more time, until an additional public hearing is held on September the 3rd. So, we're going to add time from tonight, when we had planned on listening to comments and then vote. We're going to listen to comments tonight, and then on September the 3rd, we're going to hold another hearing. So, you know, we want to make sure everyone gets a chance to be heard, give the public the opportunity to, for input, for more input. So, at the completion of the public comment period tonight, we won't take action, other than to announce that the next public hearing regarding this plan will be September the 3rd. So, with that, I will entertain a motion from the commission to adopt these procedures for this evening.
A move that we adopted, so stated procedures for this evening Planning Commission meeting?
Okay, we have a motion to adopt by Commissioner Funny. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor of adopting these procedures for this evening's meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. So, in the back of the room, we've got these meetings. All right, new business. 1459, re-adoption, agenda item 1459, re-adoption of the City of Brookhaven official zoning map. And who's making the...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll go first, and then the consultant will come forward.
Okay.
First, I'd like to note for the record that we do have a hard copy of the map in the back of the room. So, if anyone's interested in taking a look at the hard copy, it's there. It is also part of this PowerPoint, and also has been posted online. The City of Brookhaven adopted the zoning map inherited from DeKalb County on January the 15th of 2013. Moving forward from that date and time, the city, as well as the general public, began to notice discrepancies. Therefore, the city undertook an extensive audit to perfect the map, and also with plans to re-adopt the official zoning map. And the official zoning map is actually known as Appendix A to the zoning ordinance. We've had a series of advertisements that have occurred. We are moving forward with this process in accordance with the Zoning Procedures Act. We have placed courtesy notices as well as courtesy signs throughout strategic areas of the city, including City Hall, Curtis Drive, and Beaufort Highway, and Brookhaven Park. We held an open house at Oglethorpe. We placed an audit website on, an audit link on the web so we could acquire input from the public as to whether or not there were any discrepancies known or viewed and asked for documentation. After that, we reposted the map, and we ran ads in the legal organ three times in the champion to identify the special call public hearing for the purpose that we're here tonight. We also reposted again, public hearing signs in the same three locations, to again, keep the public informed of what we're doing. I wanted to point out that we have engaged the services of Pond and Company to go through this audit with us. We engaged their services in February. This has been an extensive audit of about 14,000 parcels. It's been a group effort among the Community Development Department and Pond and Company, with Pond taking the lead. We have relied on the services extensively of our GIS manager, Mike Edelson. We've relied extensively on Becky Apter for a lot of the coordination and mailings, which were quite extensive, and also public hearing items. Ben Song, our deputy director, and the other planners in the office have also been engaged in this process. So, we've done what we think is everything possible to try to ensure that we're perfecting this map to the best of our ability. So, step one tonight will be that Michelle Alexander with Pond and Company will come forward to you and explain to you the process that's been used, the background, and the results of the zoning map audit. After completion of her presentation, I'll make some final comments, and then we can open the floor for public hearing.
This is your reserving time for...
Yes, yes, thank you. So, Michelle, thank you.
I stumbled, right? Sure. Thank you. Again, I'm Michelle Alexander with Pond. Thank you so much for your confidence and letting us work with you on this project. I'm going to, I've been asked to walk through basically the method. This is a lot of data, and there was a lot of manual labor involved with this. And so, we wanted to make sure that folks had a sense of confidence. And so, if I haven't gone into enough detail, stop me. Happy to slow down and work backwards, but I didn't want to overburden the time that you've allotted here for us today. So, let me try that again. What do I have to aim at? Did I turn it off by accident?
Technical moment, please.
So, let me just, yeah, that's okay. So, the next slide. Thanks.
Well, maybe. It looks like it's frozen.
No, I see a mouse.
Okay. So, just three points about it, like Susan said, what I'll be talking about on the presentation. We'll go then into every step of the way. Go ahead, next slide. Susan went over a little bit of the background, but I want to mention the map that was given, that was used by the city was in PDF form. It was a picture. It was a photograph. It was not a database. It was not in, if you think of Excel, for those of you who use Excel, it was not in a spreadsheet form. Your current staff did create it and spent the labor, the effort to turn it into a data format. And along the way, Susan mentioned there were errors discovered, but not just errors. There were case files that the city received from the county, hard copy files. But it was also discovered there was a 20-year gap. That is, there was evident from the time period observed of the hard files that were received, there were 20 years missing that we assumed still had to exist. So, the city went ahead, initiated the zoning audit, and our first steps, if you go to the next slide, were to look at this static map. Like I said, it was a picture. It was not dynamic. And then we worked with Mike Edelson, next slide, to talk through how to turn that from static to dynamic. So, what you see there is an example of just a parcel now, which both has data that describes it in space, and it's got attributes that can tell you what about that parcel, what's its acreage. What we didn't have accurately was the data saying, well, what's its zoning district. And so, now we have this database. So, part of what we submitted was an updated database that has corrected to the best of our ability, given all of our sources. You have a database with zoning districts. Susan mentioned it's over 14,000, yes?
Can we put this in slideshow mode so we can, or is it the rest of it just simple text? Is there any more detail like the slide you just showed?
It's like a full screen.
We can't, okay.
Yeah, there was an issue with the...
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Yeah, so, over 14,000 parcels. And we broke the work up in phases since we didn't know what we didn't know. We didn't know how much physical manual labor would be, it would take to go through individual files. So, wisely, the director and the city manager said, "Let's break this up in phases so we can really keep accountable this big process, given the enormous amount of data." And so, first of all, we took everything that you had in hard copies, and we put it into a database. And the, a big piece of this, what you're getting is a deliverable. It's exciting because not all, a lot of other jurisdictions were like what Brookhaven were given. I want you to know that other places aren't necessarily sophisticated and don't necessarily have data, but that's so inefficient, and you are going to be able to be so much more responsive now. It'll be faster for your constituents, faster for your applicants. Your staff will be able to access and query information. One of the most important things about the information you'll be able to query are conditions. So, the next slide is, this is just one example. Oh, dear, yeah, too bad we can't make this closer up. But this is just one example. We scanned where we had hard copy data and where we went through to DeKalb County records and got minutes, we scanned that. So, now staff just has to look it up. You can query and just look up the number. If an applicant comes to the desk, it can be looked up. Hey, you got a bunch of conditions. So, this is one example. This one ends on this page, is L, goes through the next page, please. And another series, it goes through Z, and then it keeps going on to B, B, C, C. So, you know, this one, one project had over 26 zoning conditions. So, it's not just capturing what your zoning district is, but being able to go back to the record of what was legally adopted as conditions to that zoning. And so, we're pleased, the next slide, we're pleased that you have that now as an additional resource associated with every one of your parcels, what conditions were placed when they were rezoned.
So, when somebody come...
Yeah, ask one question, but we just adopted a procedure, I think.
Oh, we did?
That suggested that we would hear the city, the staff presentation, open the public hearing, just as we normally do for a typical zoning, and let the public ask, and then we ask, then we can open it up to questions, so.
Well, I'll forget by then what I want to ask. And it's a point of clarification, so.
Okay.
Forget, that's fine. Don't worry about it.
So, the mechanics will be that it's an electronic, that the staff can look it up and find what the conditions were, and electronically have it on file. So, that was one step, right? Going through and just capturing the data you had, and hard copy capturing that electronically and in a searchable way. We also looked at several other sources of digital data that were in database format. The county had an internal database called Hanson, and we also looked at the tax assessors. We compared your, the adopted maps data to the tax assessor. And as I mentioned, we had the new database created with the hard case files that we had received from DeKalb County. Just to mention, those came in three different phases. We did recover the 20-year gap. Staff helped out a lot. They did not, the county staff helped, and they didn't get everything that they requested from their archives. So, there were three phases of getting that data and integrating that data from the case files, the hard copies. One thing to note is when we compared what you had as your adopted file to the tax assessor data, contrary to what we, some questions had emerged, if it weren't just adopted as the tax assessor, and it was not. There were many cases where the tax assessor data did not match what the city had adopted. And when you looked at the tax assessor data, many of you may know, it's not very complete either. So, that was just one finding. But we did use all of these as resources to see where might there be potential problems. If there were disconnect, and if there were items that did not match, that flagged that potentially we need to dig more and give special research. We also made the corrections for all the errors that staff and elected officials and constituents had found along the way. And then we went to the source that DeKalb County uses as its official zoning map. This is a document, a program, it's a map that's located in a program called Bentley. It's MicroStation, and for those of you who work in the engineering world, a similar program is called CAD. So, it's an electronic design program, and you can draw in it. What it did not have is data. That is, it wasn't like you could just take that map and turn it and retrieve a data table, a data set, or query, or just look up a parcel number. It was not in that format. So, in that sense, it was similar as having a PDF. You could just see it and look at it. I think I have it on the next slide. Some of the issues with just looking at it is even looking at it wasn't always very clear. The lines didn't always match up. It was tough to read. And a printout of it, we did printout a giant one so we could manually take a look at it and do a visual comparison. We were very, we tried to be very comprehensive, to use both electronic data and our old-school "use your eyes" and meticulously check parcel to parcel of what are the discrepancies that we found. The good thing with Bentley, that was exciting, is it does also include case numbers. So, we referred a lot often back to this map, since this is what, if you, this is what the resource is. If you were to go to DeKalb County and ask the staff there, "What's my official zoning district?" The staff, staff would look this program up on a screen and inform the applicant according to our, what we use as the official. This is what it is. So, that was, we came back to this to double-check all of our minutes and different records that we found. Next slide. Lest you think that DeKalb is stuck with that prior version, the good news is they have moved forward, and this is an image from their tax parcel GIS system. They haven't officially released it, but you can go online to look up parcels. And so, we also went to this to see where there had been split parcels or subdivided. So, one thing we found sometimes was on Bentley, might have been one big parcel zoned a certain way, and yet, in reality today, it's divided up into four different parcels. So, we contended with that. Sorry, I know I'm going into a lot of the detail, but I wanted you to realize, we worked really hard to go back to existing data, and also moving forward. You know, this is, will be evolving, and you'll want to maintain it and expand it. And as DeKalb improves their systems, you'll be able to get more data to inform your system. So, next slide, please. So, then, we did have a list during Phase Two. We said, "Look, there's a," we identified where there's potential error, potential and known error. And we then did research and looked into the Bentley, nearly 1,000 parcels. We also went to DeKalb County, their records. They have, we, they have on microfiche all of their resolutions. So, whenever the county commissioners made a rezoning decision, they captured it on microfiche. So, we went to a computer, and we could search, we searched both PIN numbers and then case numbers where there was some kind of ambiguity, and we looked up all of them. So, the good news is when you have a case file, one case sometimes can cover 1,000 parcels or hundreds of parcels. So, we could cover a lot more ground, maybe than I'm making it sound, given the enormity of the number of data files. So, we also provided, one of our deliverables that I need to still make sure Mike has in its complete form, is not only do you have then what you need for your map, recommended, verified to the degree we could with our existing data, you also have a source record that says, we checked all of these sources, and this was the results of what all of these sources say. And you have a notes column that says why we're making the recommendation you have. So, if we all get hit by a bus tomorrow, you have documentation that said, "This is the process," or at least, "This is what the record was of how, what we found and where we found it." And from that, then, we created the GIS, the geographical information file, that lets you associate the parcel number to your shape of the parcel on your map, to a zoning district, and also to know whether or not they have conditions. And we did draft one with that. We met with staff, poured over that. Next slide, please. We made additional research on about 40 cases. So, staff saw some things and discrepancies and asked us to triple-check. This was great, quality control for anyone just doing both an eye check and also knowledge of the cases. We also found some cases, there were about seven, where one parcel actually was zoned and allowed to have two different zoning districts, one parcel. So, and that is actually, I've seen it in other jurisdictions, the applicant doesn't know how they're going to divide it all up yet, but they want to get the zoning entitlement. So, the front of it's going to be C1 somehow, and the back part of it's going to be a Y. So, one parcel might have two designations. So, staff worked a method for managing that, making sure it's clear on the map that you're going to adopt, or that is recommended to adopt, that it's identified on that map as well as in your database, so someone can know that their parcel has that, those two designations. We made another draft, and this is what was posted then, where your staff made, the city made a call for corrections. And the map that's online, folks could zoom in, that is, they could find their individual parcel. I want you to know, I know it's hard to see some of these big maps and locate things, but you could zoom in, see the street name and identify where your, where your location were if you had a concern. So, we had an open house with staff, and Pond attended that as well. We made final revisions. The next slide. And then it was reposted after any corrections we had from the open house. As Susan was mentioning, anyone, any property that looked like it needed a correction, given the results of our research, that property owner received a letter notification, so they could comment, reply, and verify. There was a total of three, I think there might be one more, total of four, of comments that came back. Of the three that we received, but to date, I think the next slide shows, there were two that actually, in fact, did need amending. So, what you have before you today is going to be recommended by staff to include an amendment. These two parcels, these are on Lenox Park, 1050 Lenox Park, and on 2484 Appalachia Drive, and I'll probably just let Ben Song maybe talk the specifics of that. But those parcels, the first one needed to actually be R85, and the other one actually needs to be R75. So, those were two final amendments we made post from public comments. And then the next slide. That basically wraps up the process and the methods. We made sure that we got from staff any zoning, rezonings, of course, that the City of Brookhaven has made since you have become a city, and this is your first public hearing. And the second one is anticipated for August 12th, for council to hear your recommendations and to review also this process, feel that comfort with what staff directed Pond team to do. And that is, that's the extent of the presentation. And if you have questions, of course, I'm here. And now Susan has a few.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Michelle. Before the Planning Commission asks questions, I just want to say that we did receive another request today at 4:50, and we did evaluate that, and Ben did pull some records. And Ben, could you state the address of that property?
2136 Havenwood Trail, and it's Haven at Briarwood. It's an existing townhome development. There was a discrepancy, like Susan mentioned, that we have corrected.
So, in consideration of the map that you have before you, that it would be, barring what you may hear from others in the audience tonight, there will be three changes to the map that's in the back of the room. It's the two represented on the slide and the one that Ben just mentioned. So, as part of your motion, if you consider moving it forward, we would need to have those three properties added as an amendment to the map to be transmitted to the council for April, excuse me, for August 12th. And that concludes the staff report. If you have any questions before you open the hearing, we'd be glad to try to answer them.
Okay, let's start on this side. Shannon, open one more time.
No, I'm good.
Okay, John?
Thank you. Hi, Michelle. Question for you. I noticed you mentioned that DeKalb is actually using Microstation Bentley. What was used for Brookhaven ArcView GIS, or what is, what is the county using, what is the city using for its system? is the city using for its system?
So you have GIS now, it's ArcView.
ArcView, okay.
GIS, yes.
How many parcels was corrected based on the data that was provided to us from DeKalb County?
980.
The 980 is what we corrected for Draft Two. So.
And anyone that was affected, we have the mailing list of all the parties that were notified.
So they've been notified. Any feedback from them as to their position?
We, one feedback came today. One feedback came earlier this morning, but it was a concern over a tax code rather than a zoning code. So that, that issue is no longer an issue, and that's all that we've heard from.
Okay. Well, I just want to commend everyone who worked on this, Ben, Mike, Becky, everyone, Michelle, Pond and company, it's a very reputable company. Thank you for your hard work. But I would say to staff, let's make certain that the residents are fully aware of what's about to take place because this is really, could change, well, it will change, some matters relating to their property. So I just want to make sure that the public and the citizens are fully aware. And I know you've done all you can do, and I know we can put in the newspaper and run ads, but I would hate to have citizens come up and say we didn't know about it. I know we go to all extremes to make it happen, but.
We appreciate that. We've certainly tried to do everything we can. And if someone comes forward later on with documentation, we can certainly address it then. But right now, we feel like we've done everything we can do. We've tried to announce it in every council meeting. We've tried to give updates. We've posted six signs, run ads, sent notices. So hopefully, the community, the community was very alarmed about this. So hopefully, they've, you know, stayed in touch and been aware of what's been going on. But we certainly want to do everything possible to make sure that this is perfected. And like I said, at a later date, if we find that something was missed, we'll certainly take corrective action. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your hard work.
Either way, Caitlin.
I just have one question. Looking at the property, I guess on the southeast corner of West Main Sea Creek Drive and Ashford Dunwoody Road, looks to me like that's colored R100, but aren't those attached townhomes? And isn't that not within the zoning code of R100?
Can we go to the map?
It's, the townhome's right near Murphy Cantler Park. And I could be wrong. I haven't driven in that neighborhood in a while.
You have the map on the screen.
Looked at that, over and over, yeah.
Who can attest to that?
Yeah, we actually looked at that one. That was the one that popped out as being wrong, I thought. And during the QC process, it just.
Quality control.
Yeah, quality control. We went to Michelle and Pond and said, "Is this right?" And we triple-checked and that's based on, I guess, I'm not sure the documentation, but.
Yeah, if I could chime in, I believe it's, again, we were aware of the same situation because if you look at the buildings on site, it doesn't appear to be a single-family detached product. And that's why that question came up. We double-checked in terms of the basing against the baseline map from DeKalb County, which is the Bentley map, which DeKalb considers their official zoning map. Unfortunately, on Bentley, it showed up as R100 as well. And there's no case that we found that would state otherwise, that would state, you know, there's some type of zoning matter that would change it. But in terms of the Bentley, which again is our baseline, showed it as R100.
Thank you.
Bert?
I don't have any questions.
We'll start down this end again, Jeff. Do you have anything?
One question. Of the 980 parcels that we found errors in, were the errors from the original information we received from DeKalb, we corrected those errors by going back to DeKalb, doing more researching and digging?
Yes.
And I guess there isn't ones clearly, from what we've been told, there wasn't one clear source of information. So we did the best we could, you did the best you could to check multiple sources and then decide. If there were five sources you checked and three said one thing, two said the other, how was the determination made?
Well, at the end of the day, if you have minutes or resolution, that's going to prevail. That's going to trump anything. After that, it would be the case file with conditions, that would trump it. And then, at some point, you have to rely on the Bentley map, which the county identifies as their official map.
Okay, thanks.
And we, the city did not have that as a, in a data format. That was not what your official, we adopted map was. It wasn't the same as the Bentley.
And obviously, that is not what was transmitted to the city.
Right.
Michelle, if you'd just give me, I mean, it's just, can you tell me, this sounds a little bit backwards, just give me a 30-second or the elevator pitch on Pond. I mean, you were, you know, I mean, obviously, the city selected Pond. You obviously have the background, but I'd like to hear the elevator pitch on what qualifies you to do all of this.
Sure, thank you. Well, we're an architecture, engineering, and planning firm. And my background as, having served as a planning director and having written zoning ordinances and worked, I'll use the word, I've temped. When cities like Norcross or Shambly did not have planning directors, I could jump in and serve as their, as their planning director. So I've written a lot of different comprehensive plans. And we, when we do our master plans, like for the Atlanta Beltline, we've done several of those, a lot of LCI master plans, we really specialize to distinct our GIS services, that we make it data-based, that it's, we take policy and the architecture and master planning, but we also give it data so that staff is armed with data underneath that you can manipulate and use. So I think it's a combination that I've worked in a shop of, and ran records and had staff and know what it means to have to find a case file and make sure it represents and has transparency for the local government making zoning and land use decisions.
Thank you. And I guess I'm going to ask Mike the same thing. Want to tell me a little bit about your background and what qualifies you to, other than your employee of the city? Obviously, I'm sure you're qualified, but I'd like to hear it.
Yeah, I guess I graduated at Florida State University from, with geography degree. And I did some land surveying, and that's kind of where I started doing kind of geospatial technologies. And my first job was at City of Gainesville, Florida, in the planning department doing assistant city, I was assistant planner slash GIS person. Moved up here and started working with CH2M Hill and helped stand up the city of Sandy Springs with our GIS department, which then also we started standing up Johns Creek. And I said, we helped build Johns Creek, Milton, all the new cities that came up. Then I was doing, so I was doing, I mean, this is since probably 2002. And then I also live in Brookhaven as well, and I saw this all coming up, and I said, "They're going to need a GIS person." I don't know anyone who's better. Yeah, so I've been doing urban planning GIS for 12 years. And zoning is a main data set that I've been working with for that whole time.
And then I guess the last question, and I'll see if anybody else has, if that brings up anything for anybody else, is that, so it sounds like it was about 7% error rate that you started with. You said about 14,000 parcels, I think, give or take, and 980 roughly were, changes had to be made? Is that, is that the right number?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, I want to just go through the commission one more time because this is really an important issue. I want to just make sure anybody, everybody has had a chance to ask questions. Then we're going to open it up for public comment. So I'll start on that end. Caitlin, do you?
No, sir.
Okay, Bert?
Well, there was a mention about the three parcels that came up at the end that were going to be asked to amend. Was there going to be any presentation as to those parcels?
Two of the parcels were on the slide.
Okay.
And we've already confirmed those, and those do need to be corrected. The third parcel, we found out about tonight at, what time was that, Ben?
4:50.
4:50. But we do have some records that we, we do believe support their contention. We found some records from a plat that was filed just a few weeks ago. So we would ask that whatever it is that the planning commission considers in your motion, including whatever the public may come up with, that you include these three as changes to the map.
As changes to the map or to have you do research on?
No, we've already done the research.
Okay, so you feel like you've done all the research on all three?
On those three.
And it's your recommendation on those three?
To add those three.
To add those three.
Right.
Thank you.
And of course, that's without hearing from the public.
Sure.
Thank you.
One last question of, so after all of this was said and done, we made all the effort to make the public aware of it, there have been three that have come forward. What is it about those three that we missed the first go-around? What circumstances led us to zone it as one thing, have the homeowner come forward and bring information that we were unable to obtain with our team? Granted, we're only talking three, but if the public isn't, hasn't spent as much time digging through this as they need to have, we can't control that now. What's to say that there aren't going to be more moving forward that we'll discover things that we also missed there?
There may be. We have done everything possible to ensure that not to happen. But as Michelle started out with her presentation, you don't know what you don't know. And if someone does come forward and they have documentation, and we've been asking for that.
As easy as possible.
You know, you know, we will, we'll have to take another look. But we certainly aren't going to close the door to something that someone proves is incorrect.
Sure. And I guess they just had information that wasn't available at the county level or through our research?
I'm sorry?
So I guess these three individuals had information that wasn't available through all of our research that they had in their own possession, they were able to verify that?
Correct.
Anything else? We do have one more? Okay. That's fine. Keep it slow on purpose. No, I, because I want us to all get a chance to think this thing through.
Sure, thanks, Dan. Thank you, Mr. Chair. What's the process in the future if a resident do come up and say, "I have a change, I have correction"? What's the process?
The property owner would need to submit documentation to us. They would need to give us a copy of either the minutes or the board of commissioners findings or a record or a case file for us to confirm that.
And beyond that, what happens? Does it come back to the planning commission and we go through this public hearing piece again? What's the whole cycle there that needs to take place? If I'm property owner A, and I now see that the city of Brookhaven published this map and it documents my property incorrectly, I send Susan an email and say, "Hey, this is information and I make attachment"? What happens?
We would need to do a map amendment and go through the procedure to advertise it, to re-adopt it.
We have to re-adopt.
Which is different from your regular hearing process as you go through your public hearings, which are advertised for rezoning cases. If you had a case tonight that traveled to the council and they had a public hearing, that would have already been advertised. So if a zoning occurred, then there would be a map update through a vetted process.
Okay.
So does the, would the process hold for, would, that's a good question. So if I, if something comes up and then I say, "Oh, that's not what I believe it is", here's my, is there a moratorium on action prior until such time as it's corrected? Not city-wide, but on the property?
Right now, going through this process, if anybody comes forward before August the 12th or on August the 12th, we will be able to make those changes and address those changes through this public hearing process that's been advertised. But after that night, if the council approves the map with these changes, after that night, if someone comes forward, then there will need to be another public hearing.
Okay, I don't think that answered my question. So after that.
Getting an understanding of the question.
No, I understand. I'm sorry, that wasn't your problem. That was criticism, I didn't get it right. So after August the 12th, we're talking about after the city's adopted the map and everything, and someone comes in and says, "I'd like to go to the, I'd like to put an application in to the planning commission to rezone this piece of property from R100 to R60." And the R100 property owner says, "Whoa, it's not R100, it was something else." Do we hold that, is that application going to be held prior until the rezoning is corrected?
No, sir. If somebody came in in July next year.
Right, right.
And filed a request for rezoning and said, "I'd like to rezone my property from R8 to M1." And someone said, "Well, but it's really not R8." We would investigate that then, and we would have to correct that before we move, we would have to go through the process then of correcting that. So that would be advertised, so you'd be going through the zoning procedures required process anyway. So going through that process would take care of the public hearing need for that.
Okay, thank you. I guess I asked, I asked more. That's what I, that's what I, that's what I was concerned. I understand now, okay. All right. Anything else for the staff or for Michelle? If not, then we're going to open the hearing for comments from the public. Do we have any comment cards? Or anybody, would anybody like to?
Not all at once.
I am hoping, yes. Would you comment, Trey, that this is going to be posted? I know. All right. Give everybody three minutes now. All right, so if there are no, no comments from the public, I, I hope that means that everybody has reviewed it and that it has, it's what they, that there are no surprises. So with that, I'll close the public hearing section of this. And we'll now have an opportunity. Does anybody have any, anything else here? If not, we can entertain a motion. I think this is going to be, we're going to need, do we need something in writing for the addresses or whatever if, if, you know, how are we going to, we'll have to help? Okay, as, I think so. I'll entertain a motion here.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we, the planning commission, adopt the official zoning map for the city of Brookhaven, including the three amended subject properties.
I assume you mean recommended option of the.
Recommended option. Thank you. Thank you for clarification.
You've done that to me.
Mr. Funny, if I may?
Sure.
The addresses would be 1050 Lenox Park from R75 to RA5, 2484 Appalachia Drive from R60 to R75.
24 Appalachia?
Appalachia Drive.
What's the number?
A 2484 Appalachia Drive from R60 to R75. And Ben, could you help me on the third one?
2136 Havenwood Trail.
From R85 to RM85.
R85 to RN?
RM, as in Mary, 85.
And the Lenox Park is going from R?
R75 to RA5.
RA as in Apple five.
Thank you. And the 2484 Appalachia is going from to?
R60 to R75.
So try it again.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
This is not as easy as it looks out there, is it?
But I have good help.
You do.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
All right. I would like to motion that the planning commission adopt the official zoning map for the city of Brookhaven. Excuse me.
Recommend.
I would like to make a motion that we recommend adoption of the official zoning map to the city council with the subject, the following subject three properties to be amended. 2136 Havenwood Trail to be corrected from R85 to RM85. 1051 Lenox Park to be corrected from R75 to RA5. 2484 Appalachia Trail to be corrected from R60 to R75.
Thank you. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Appalachia Drive.
Correction to the motion, Appalachia Drive. Thank you.
Do we have a second on that? We have a motion? I'll second. Okay, we have a motion, and who's going to do it?
Bert.
Bert? Okay. We have, Christian Levy has a second. And do we have any discussion on the motion? I'd just like to say that I, one of the things that's concerned me is feeling confident that the city and Pond has gone through all of the data, and I'm, I'm actually pleased to know that it isn't, one, that it wasn't as large, as larger percentage as we've, you know, as I guess it could have been, I guess always, and number two, it sounds like your process that you've been through certainly was thorough and the experiences that you bring will benefit the city. So, you know, that certainly has given me confidence to, to vote this evening. And I did not walk in here with that confidence, but I, I certainly, even after I read everything, so I, and I have it this evening. So, you know, that certainly has given me confidence to, to vote this evening, and I did not walk in here with that confidence, but I, I certainly, even after I read everything, so I, and I have it this evening. So I want to thank you. Anybody else have anything? All right, so we have a motion, we have a second for recommendation for, for approval of the official zoning map amended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we got it.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, thank you guys, I know that was a lot of work.
Thank you.
Okay.
I bet it was them and not me.
It was wearing, it was wearing. Okay, next item on the agenda is the comprehensive plan 2034.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The city of Brookhaven adopted DeKalb County's comprehensive plan upon incorporation. And according to the city charter, the city has until the end of this year to adopt its own comprehensive plan. The adoption of the plan in accordance with state regulations will establish the city as a qualified local government and provide a blueprint for land use planning and decisions over the next 20 years. We have engaged the services of the steering committee. I was looking around the room, I, I'm not quite sure that I see any steering committee members here other than the two that serve on the planning commission. So we thank the steering committee for their time and engagement, as well as both Chairman Stan Siegel, who chaired the committee, as well as this commission, and Shannon Cameron, we appreciate your dedication to this process. So in that regard, the purpose of the hearing tonight is to gather public input on the comprehensive plan. And Mr. Chairman, as you stated during your preamble, during the city council hearing last night, the council asked that the planning commission not forward a recommendation to the council for the next meeting, but rather use this meeting as an opportunity for public input, and then have an additional hearing on September the 3rd for additional com, uh, public input, and then to provide your recommendation on the plan at that time. So we've engaged the services of Jacobs, and Amanda Hatton has been the lead on this project. And Amanda, tonight will come forward to you and give you the process we've gone through, identify the comprehensive plan, and what we've laid out for the future, and we'll have public input after that. And then, as we adjourn, just make sure the public knows again that the next hearing is on September the 3rd. And so we thank you for, so Amanda, without further ado. And Becky, is the PowerPoint power, there we go. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Susan, and thank you to the commission for having us here tonight. And again, it's been a pleasure working with the city and your community members in developing this planning process. As I'll go through in my hopefully brief but very informative presentation, I highlight that this is really a community-based plan, and it really sets the vision for where the city's going in the future. And so we've worked really hard to provide opportunities for public input throughout the process, and really the input that we've received to be the basis of the plan. And it looks like I'm going to have to resort to the fix, helping with passing through the slides here. We can go ahead to the first one. Okay, so, so first of all, very basic, why do we have a comprehensive plan? What is comprehensive plan 2034? And really, you can think about it as a business plan for the city of Brookhaven with a focus on land use as the basis of that, but we also looked into some other substantive elements that the city is responsible for carrying out or has a role in carrying out, and I'll get into that in a little detail. It, it is a community-based plan, it sets the long-term vision for the city, but also looks in the short term, what are the priority items and tasks that we need to pursue in the city to address our needs or opportunities to really help direct our community forward. It's also, it sets the foundation for spurring both private and public investment. You have a plan in place, people want to invest there, and it also helps leverage the regional, state, and other funding that's out there to help accomplish things that the city wants to see go forward. And as Susan already spoke to, the plan is a requirement of the state of Georgia for all localities, including municipalities and counties, and it's tied to several funding sources, including grants and special loan and financing mechanisms. So that is what the comprehensive plan does, it, it looks to the long term and it, it focuses on short-term implementation. And that is redundant slide, so we'll just pass that. So we, the planning process began in April. We, and we actually worked with the city a little bit before that, but the meeting, the planning process kicked off on the 22nd of April with the city council. We had a public hearing to let the public know about the process we'd be going through, and also to provide, allow an opportunity for people to provide any input or concerns they had about the process we had laid out. But there are, were six phases in the planning process to help develop the plan. And we started with project initiation, moved into a look at existing conditions, looking at the substantive elements of the plan. What's on the ground today, what are the existing trends, and how does that influence our mindset as we plan for the future? Then we moved into a goal-setting phase with the public, followed that with prioritizing needs and opportunities, again, with the public's involvement. And then we moved into the community work program and looking at that short-term implementation that I talked about earlier. And so that's where we are today. Also, folding into that phase five is the actual development of the draft plan, which, as I mentioned, kind of builds on these previous phases. And so the last phase, which we were targeting for August to October, is regional transmission and review and adoption. But as, it's already been referenced a couple of times, that'll be looking more to November, so extending that timeframe a little bit longer for further opportunity for public input. The plan was developed with a team of people, and I, here are really the, the five key groups of that. City staff, of course, in partnership with our consultant team, led the planning process in terms of getting it through the different phases. But we also had a steering committee, as we mentioned, your chairman and Shannon also served on that steering committee with other representatives from the community. They guided the process, provided us input on how we could further public input during the process, but also on the direction we were headed with recommendations and the land use component of the plan. And so that was really important, so we made sure when we got to meetings, we were going off of a solid, solid basis and building from that. Of course, the public played an important role and elected officials, and y'all's commission is an important part of this at the end of the day. Having the city council adopted is an important part of meeting those state requirements, and also signifying to the community and the private sector that this plan is legit, this is where we're headed, we are committed to it. So our, the, the process, well, actually, so this is looking at what the comprehensive plan covers. There are really three key aspects that, that are calling the plan framework. Community goals, needs and opportunities, and then the community work program. These, again, go back to the state planning requirements. The community goals, I'd say, look at the long term, they look 20 years ahead, or, you know, it's comprehensive plan 2034. It includes an overall vision statement, some goals that I'll, I'll touch on a little bit later. And then the character area map, which is really the future land use element of the plan. It looks at all of the different unique areas of the city and sets out a vision for those. I'll talk about them in more detail later, as they're particularly important to, to this group and the role you all have in the community. The, again, we're looking at this 20-year timeframe out to 2034, with the five-year period being the implementation program. And the reason we focus on that is, is that things change a lot after five years, things in the broad economy and the local environment here, and all localities are actually required to update their plan at minimum every five years. You could choose to do it earlier, but five years, you'll want to look back at things and refresh every, everything in it. I, I mentioned a couple of times substantive elements of the plan, they are laid out here. We looked at land use as the basis of the plan, community facilities, economic development, ensuring you all have a strong tax base, demographics, the characteristics of the population, and, and furthering a good environment for, for the community in the long term, and also housing. The last element there is transportation. That, as you all, I think, are aware, the city has pursued a separate comprehensive transportation plan, but we do reference it as a, a key implementation arm of the plan. And as you'll see up there, also the Beaufort Highway Plan, and their efforts have been coordinated with the economic development aspect of the plan, as well as the land use component. And then Parks and Recreation has also been reviewed and coordinated closely with the comprehensive plan to make sure things are consistent and nothing's conflicting. As I mentioned when I got started, public involvement is really the basis of, of a comprehensive planning process, and that's something that we take to heart whenever we work with the community. It's really important that the public has an opportunity for input and, and help, and guide the process. So there were several public involvement methods that we used. The communications aspect was really tied back to the existing communications channels that you all have in the city. There was a website portal on the city's website where people could go to contact our planning team, find out who the steering committee members were, find out about meetings that were coming up, as well as review items that had been presented through either the steering committee or public meetings. So just to highlight a few of the, the public involvement activities. We did carry out interviews at the very beginning of the process, that included 16 different stakeholders. We talked with each of the elected officials, key leaders of departments for the city. We talked with economic development partners in the community, including the Perimeter Community Improvement District, as well as some of the folks at DeKalb County. We also talked with some of your other partners, such as Oglethorpe University, and I, and my mind's blanking a little bit on the others, but I can give you a full, full list if you'd like. We also carried out a, a web-based community survey that fell in between the Visioning Workshop and the Needs and Opportunities Workshop, but that was up for a month, and we asked people several different types of questions focused on, on some of the issues we had heard brought to us by the steering committee and the stakeholder interviews, as well as staff at the beginning, to further vet those and understand the direction that the community want to go in the future. Already talked about the steering committee, we taught, we met four times throughout the planning process. We also had two concurrent joint, oh, well, two joint committee meetings with the other concurrent planning efforts to help make sure that we were on the same page as with those other planning teams, but then also that members of those steering committees could understand what was going on in the other plans and, and trigger anything that might, might, might seem to be a conflict or an opportunity to coordinate better. And then again, so we had a few more, this slide actually focuses on some of the public meetings that we had. I mentioned the, the kickoff hearing with council on April 22nd, which really got the planning process started with the public. And then we had a Visioning Workshop in May, where we focused on starting to look at the geography of the city and what are some, where are the areas that we want to see certain types of development, or areas that we don't want to see change over time. Made sure that folks that came spoke to every part of the community, not just the area where they live. We moved on past that meeting to, to the Needs and Opportunities Workshop, where we provided a, a draft of the character areas, where I'll, which I'll talk about in a minute. And we also asked for people to help us prioritize needs and opportunities by each of those substantive elements of the plan. And then, of course, on this past Monday, we had an open house to present the recommendations, the draft recommendations of the plan, including each of the 13 character areas was on display for people to look at in detail, so they could understand what was planned for their area of the city, what the long-term vision was, but also understand the broader picture. And this just summarizes all the public meetings that we've had to date. And of course, we're down in the red area that circled on July 23rd with this hearing. There's a, we'll have a work session with council next week, council and mayor, and then there'll be the two more hearings that we talked about, that's the plan at this point. So, so now I want to, that's the overall process and how we got to the actual plan document that's now posted to the city's website, and I think you all had it in advance of this meeting. What's in the plan document, there's really five, there's five main chapters. And then there's a set of appendices which provide supporting information. At the public meeting the other night, I told people, you know, if you only need to read two sections, if you only have time to read two sections of the plan, look at chapter three, the community goals, which includes that future land use vision, and chapter five, which is the implementation strategy for the next five years. And we'll identify specific actions for the city to take to accomplish the needs and opportunities of the city. I mentioned earlier that there's an, there's the long-term vision of the city is, is covered in the plan, and we developed a vision statement that really we see as an overarching direction of where the city's going. I think the point, thing to point out here is that Brookhaven will be a national model for a walkable urban community. And it goes on to say, I won't read the whole thing, that we preserve our neighborhoods, our parks, our other characteristics that people love about this place and want to see stay in the future as we continue to embrace that we are an urban community. We also identified overarching goals for the community, and we tied those to each of the needs and opportunities that's in the plan. And the, those overarching goals are, are listed here. So again, getting back to some very common themes that we heard from the public, from the leadership, from community members, about what we needed to be spending our time on and should be kept in the forefront of, of the city's efforts. And those are, are all listed here, and as I said, they're tied, tied to different aspects of the plan and the document. So as I mentioned a couple of times, we have the future, really what the future land use plan cities and counties will approach future land use plans and their comprehensive plan in different ways. You could have a parcel-specific future land use map, or you could have a character area map, or you could have a combination of the two under the state regulations. And the approach that Brookhaven has taken is to have a character area map. And what that does is, again, define these unique character areas of the city, and what are the appropriate land uses in those areas? What's our long-term vision? And what are implementation items that we should be pursuing in those areas? So that's what we developed, and that's what will help guide the land use decisions in, in the city. There are 13 character areas in total, eight are primarily residential in, in nature, and five are, are activity community centers with varying level of intensities. And like I said before, I'll, I'll walk through each of them very briefly, and then if you guys have questions, I can certainly help answer those. There's a couple other things that we point out as a part of this land use plan. Gateway features, areas where we see being gateways into the city that, that should be given special attention. Those are indicated by stars, they're difficult to see on the, on the size of the screen right now. And we also look at neighborhood commercial, one of the things we heard early on is that we would like to be more walkable and bikeable, but part of that is not just having the transportation infrastructure, but having places to walk to and an active street along the way. So we recommend those. We also look at areas requiring special attention and, and document those upfront. That includes your stream corridors, your tree canopy, stuff like that, that came up as, as things that we need to be considering as we look at redevelopment and development. We also looked at active living resources and areas of priority redevelopment to help, again, help guide the city's direction. So now I just very briefly going to walk through each of the, the character areas that are in the plan. And I, what I'm going to do is just start from the top part of the city and, and move south. So the, the first character area is perimeter center. We identified that it remains an area of high-intensity land uses. There, it was identified that it should be mixed, be a mixed-use area and include residential and commercial that serves the neighborhood, not just the building that's on the site and the people in that. We also talk about buffers and transitions to the adjoining neighborhoods. We know that it's envelope, but the big yellow area, which is residential, and it's very important that appropriate buffers are in place as development occurs in that area, and the zoning should support that. The next district here is the Lakes, what we're calling the Lakes District includes several residential areas in the northern portion of the city. And the vision here is really to preserve the single-family neighborhoods that are there while allowing for complimentary infill housing. And I will point this out because this comes up on several slides, is complimentary infill. Recommendation of the plan is that infill needs to be further investigated by the city and then considered for changes in your zoning ordinance. But the comp plan is, you know, high-level, and there's ordinance. But the comp plan is, you know, high-level, and there's, you know, not enough public dialogue to make specific recommendations for potential changes to how you regulate infill. But we do talk about that in the recommendations. Also, in this area, one of the important things was connecting, considering some parks and trail connections. The next area is the Blackburn Park Neighborhood Center. This is the area there by Johnson Ferry and Ashford Dunwoodie Road. The vision is really this being a walkable neighborhood mixed-use center. You've already got a lot of those pieces in place, so furthering that vision moving forward. There is some opportunity for strategic redevelopment of older existing uses, potentially out parcel development and other things. And there have been some other plans that have been done in that area, and we certainly reference those as a basis for some of these comments in the Blackburn Park area. And one of the key things in this area is pedestrian has priority over the automobile. So keeping that in mind, you've got Blackburn Park. So that's really the vision of this area. Lynwood Park is the next area down. This is, you know, the area north of Windsor Parkway. The vision is to maintain the traditional neighborhood character of the area, again, complementary infill. So we're not expecting this area to see a lot of change, but there was identification that you, it would be great to further expand the neighborhood commercial. Now you have it Osborne and Windsor Parkway. So going back to that neighborhood commercial, need to create more, an opportunity for more walkable or desirable, walkable environment in the city. Next character area, Historic Brookhaven. This contains the National Register District of Historic Brookhaven. Also includes a couple areas that are adjoining to it that provide gateways into that district through signage, and they're a part of the Neighborhood Association. So the vision for this area is to preserve the historic character, the large lot character. And then you, of course, you have these gateways that come in that are a little bit higher density, but that area not expanding further into the district. So maintaining that character. And part of that is going to be coordinating with the City of Atlanta because that is also where Historic Brookhaven, the district, actually resides. The Osborne character area again is another one of the areas that is residential and neighborhood. We see, the community sees this area largely staying the same over the long term, single-family residential, parks and recreation uses. And that's the Osborne character area. The Peachtree Corridor overlay district, this lays right on top of your overlay district because it's the same exact boundaries. The vision that we heard from the public is very much in line with what you guys have already identified in the livable centers initiative study that's been done for the area, you know, looking at medium-density, malt day story, mixed use in the area. And we did, through the public process and the survey, well, confirm here from people that this is where the town center of Brookhaven should be, however you all define that, moving forward in the next few years. The Ashford Park Drew Valley character area is just southeast of Peachtree Road, includes the two neighborhoods and just south of Dresden. This is an area where, again, preserving and maintaining the existing residential character is important to the community, and that's the vision for the area. There is some opportunity for neighborhood commercial at the intersection of Dresden and Claremont. And we also delved a little bit further into Claremont as being an opportunity to be a more enhanced corridor moving forward. And so that's identified in the plan, but we do point out that there needs to be additional analysis of what exactly makes sense there. The Brookhaven Heights, Brookhaven Fields character area is just south of the Peachtree Corridor character area as you go down North Druid Hills. Again, this is one of those eight neighborhood character areas, maintaining the existing single-family neighborhoods and ensuring that compatible infill housing happens there. But overall, this area, the vision is important to change very much in the long term. The Lenox Park character area is an area just off of North Druid Hills. There, we see this as an opportunity for the community, saw this as an opportunity to be more of a live-work-play environment. You've got the live and the work, but you're missing a little bit of a play aspect to it. So over time, it could really evolve into more of an activity, activity center for the community with more destinations and infill development. You have a lot of open space, so there's an opportunity to build or create community facilities or centers in that area moving forward. Briarwood Park is just getting close to, right surrounding Briarwood Park, getting close to Beaufort Highway. We see this area continuing as a high-quality, high-density townhome and condo development area. And Briarwood Park being an important part of that, we'll reference that. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan and the Beaufort Highway Plan both talk about opportunities for redevelopment and potential park expansion just south of there, getting to Beaufort Highway. And so we certainly cross-reference those plans. And there might be an opportunity down the road where you might actually want to expand this character area depending on what happens in that area. The Roxborough Borough area again is one of the eight residentially-focused districts, and so preserving and enhancing that district is really the vision and then ensuring compatible residential infill. The last character area, so number thirteen here, is the Beaufort Highway Corridor. The vision, transitioning from an auto-dominated suburban corridor into a denser urban walkable corridor. And one of the key things is preserving affordable housing and looking at additional active and passive park space. And again, I'll defer to the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and the Beaufort Highway Plan we references as important implementation elements in this character area. And then the next slide actually talks, one thing we did identify from a conceptual level is that you can really have three levels of intensity along Beaufort Highway, with the highest level intensity being along I-85, that's the brighter orange color, moving to a medium-density level right on the eastern, eastern side of Beaufort Highway. And then as you get close to the neighborhoods on the other side of Beaufort Highway, it going to a lower density. We also identified two activity nodes in that area. One is right at Druid Hills as a regional center, and then up at Briarwood Park being a neighborhood center. And those areas are a quarter-mile walking distance from the center of the intersection. And again, this ties into the two plans I've been referencing for, that are, make quite a few recommendations for the area. It also connects with the regional plan for higher intensity along, along the I-85 corridor there. So that's kind of, was the broad picture of the character area and the future land use plan. We also, in the, at the end of the document, is the implementation program. It is based on priority needs and opportunities, which were vetted with the public at the Needs and Opportunities Workshop. There are roughly forty of those. And we identified action items for 2015 to 2019 that would address them in close coordination with the city. We walked through them with the steering committee. And those are also an important plan, element of the plan, but I won't bore anyone to death, and maybe someone's falling asleep back there. So I can certainly answer, answer questions, but that's an overview. And then, again, this highlights what the community work program is, which is those action items that happen in the next five years. And they include description of the activity, the timeframe for implementation, the responsible party, and they also have the estimated cost and a potential funding source. So a real concrete guide for the city to make budgeting decisions and, or to help make budgeting decisions and action plan items in the future. And I'll, well, this looks like an older version of the PowerPoint. But, so this is, so ignore this slide because the information is wrong on there. But that's, that's the end of my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amanda. Susan?
Thank you, Amanda. I actually have your other slide. I think that Amanda was wanting to point out that the city council work session is on July 29th at 3:00 PM, where she will provide this plan to the council. Again, your next public hearing will be September the 3rd. We will open the public hearing again and then ask for a recommendation from the Planning Commission. The plan will be transmitted or go to the council for public hearing on September 9th, where we will ask for a transmittal. However, prior to that, there will also be a meeting on August the 12th. And then the slated date for adoption now with the changed schedule is November the 18th. And that completes the presentation. We'll be glad to try to answer questions, and then certainly, if you have none, then the public hearing.
Right. Thank you. Open up for questions. Caitlin?
Yeah, excuse me. I guess, first of all, how are the, I guess, the boundaries for the character areas decided?
Okay, so we, we looked at, we started by looking at an inventory of what's in place now from a geographic standpoint. We looked at your existing character area map, which was adopted from the DeKalb County Comprehensive Plan. We also looked at a map of neighborhoods, and that was the basis that the city has put together. That was the basis for forming the initial character area. So we looked at, okay, where are the neighborhoods that need to stay intact? They're all have a similar character. Where did the county look at these character areas being? And then, once we had connected those pieces, we started looking at what are the land use patterns? When was housing built? Because a lot of Brookhaven, I think roughly seventy percent is residential, or seven, it might be more like seventy-five percent. So we looked at what are the characters, when was the housing built? What are the lot types? And then grouping areas that made sense together. And then we knew that there are certain character or more commercial-based areas, which are the activity centers that I talked about. So we looked at it, you know, based on a variety of factors, but those were the key ones that we looked at, the existing plans that were in place, including the regional plan, I should mention, for the whole Atlanta region, the DeKalb County Plan, looking at your neighborhoods, and then looking at the characteristics of development in different areas.
And we also relied on the steering committee, as the steering committee lives here, and use the committee to help guide in that regard, to help establish those boundaries.
That is a very, very important point. And like, I mentioned, we had character, we talked about character areas and had the boundaries up that we had developed at each of the public meetings for people to look at and provide input on.
And I apologize for not being as thoroughly versed in this as we all probably should be, but, how robust are the recommendations within each character area? And by that, I mean, when we, as a commission now, will be facing future rezoning requests, you know, one of the factors, of course, we always look to is the current land use plan. Is the use compatible with that? And so for each of these character areas, I'd say, how much guidance is there within that?
Sure, I'll defer to Susan.
The land use plan is a blueprint for the city. The land use plan is a guide for the city. It is one of the components that you review in your criteria in analyzing a land use decision. And of course, this is a twenty-year guide. So there's a variety of factors that you look at, one of which is land use plan. It's a very important part of the plan. But you also have to look at proposals that come before you to see if they're, to see whether they are viable alternatives to the plan. So if it were a zoning map, then you wouldn't really have to go through zoning decisions. It's a land use plan. It's a, it's a plan, and it's a guide to help you in your decisions.
Right. And that's, I guess, what I was getting to, is how much help am I going to get from this? You know, as far as capturing what the, you know, what the public felt in their input. I mean, I certainly hear that was the process that we were aiming for. And I understand we've got to start somewhere to get these things down. And we've got, you know, a lot of things you've built in to think about in the future. But I'm just thinking about, say, you know, at our next meeting, whatever these things get adopted, how much are we able to, going to be able to take away from this and say, okay, this use, we think it is compatible with what the, you know, what the neighborhood was thinking, what the, what the community thought when they adopted the plan?
Are you asking whether or not you feel like you have enough information in the plan to help guide you in a decision?
Right. Well, it's like, for instance, you know, if someone proposed a neighborhood, you know, shopping center or something, you know, for an area, be able to go to that character area and say, okay, look, based on what we see here, that's perfect, or maybe that's not exactly what we put in the plan. Obviously, we'll consider what they have to say. But I'm saying, is, are we able to look at this and make this kind of, you know, recommendations?
Yes, yes, you will.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. John? Yes. Just so that I'm clear and making certain that we addressed the areas that's required, what coordination was done with the transportation planning effort?
I'll give part one answer, and then if you'd like to give the other answer. We were very careful to make sure that all four planning initiatives communicated. We had joint committee meetings. We had joint telephone conferences. And they, as well, have had independent conferences among themselves. Because we knew that it was very important that that rational nexus was together with land use, transportation, Parks and Record, and Beaufort Highway. And Amanda, if you would like to add to that?
Right. And so building on what Susan said, you know, in the actual plan document, we, we allude to the transportation plan many times upfront in the document, highlighting that that, the transportation element is the transportation arm of this plan. And, and what else am I trying to say here?
Well, I think what you also indicated in the plan is that in the appendices, the other three initiatives will, will be ultimately in the unified document. And all, the goal is for all four plans to work together. And that's been the attempt all along.
Okay. And I understand we want the plan to work together, but I guess I want to hear more of the technical content on how did you test the character area with respect to transportation? Clearly, the character area is going to define what is being adopted in the comp plan. I'm more interested in hearing, how does the transportation plan reacts to the comp plan character area? Typically, we do the four-step process. If it's too intense, we need to hear that. And I want to know that that has been addressed here because we're set in the future for Brookhaven. And if transportation doesn't react to the land use implications, we're going to be stuck with issues in the future that may be overtaxed into the transportation network. So I guess I want to hear more of the technical piece of, how did you trade off with the transportation plan? Did you give them the character area? They tested it, and then you're coming back and saying, this works?
Well, I'll give one example. I know when we were looking at the Claremont Road area, one of the things that we talked about with the steering committee, as well with the consultant and those that were in attendance, was that the, we saw Claremont Road as having an opportunity for some increased possible commercial use, but also wanting to recognize and keep the residential that's there, but look toward the future. And one of the components that was looked at was transportation. The transportation planner that was there indicated that the street network there would, in fact, support a future of more intense commercial use. But we need to be careful with that to make sure that, you know, we don't create a district that allows more commercial than should be there. So that was one example of where the two different groups worked together, and that was occurring throughout the plan process.
Okay, great. Very good.
And I'll also point out that, you know, again, we've got these eight residentially-focused areas where we really don't see a lot of change happening in terms of density or major increases in population. So we're really focused in these five areas, up at perimeter center, there at Johnson Ferry and Ashford Dunwoodie, Peachtree Road, Beaufort Highway, and then the fifth area, which probably isn't so much of a transportation concern, is the Lenox Park area, because that's going to be a longer, a longer-term thing. And so the transportation plan has, you know, those are the key quarters that they have been looking at as a part of the improvement plan.
Couple other questions, Mr. Chair. We live in a very diverse community. We have international citizen. How have they participated with this planning process?
Right. Well, so I would say, you know, one of the things that we did upfront was talk with the Latin American the Latin American Association, and we talked with the executive director, and to understand what the concerns were of some of the more internationally-focused residents of the community. We asked, you know, how can we get them involved along the way? We did translate the community survey to Spanish. We put advertisements for the survey, and actually hard copies of the survey at the Latin American Association. So, we, we provided an opportunity for people to get engaged.
And my final question deals with the regional center at North Druid at Beaufort Highway. I know that is under a separate study.
Yes.
How did you come to a recommendation of a regional center? I understand the high density towards 85 and moving in and gradually lowering it. And the reason I'm asking, that area has the hotel, commercial, and on the strip, and then as you get beyond the hotel, there's a counseling center there. And then you have townhomes there, and some homes that have been, John Whelan has spent some resources in building some really nice homes back there. That's within a quarter-mile walk distance. How does that regional center fit within the context of that area with that makeup?
Right. Well, first of all, you asked, you know, where we had come up with, with that concept, and it actually goes back to the 2007 Beaufort Highway multimodal corridor study that was done for the broader area of Beaufort Highway.
By DeKalb County or Brookhaven?
It was actually completed by the Atlanta Regional Commission.
Okay. Oh, '07. Okay.
And it, it identified activity nodes along Beaufort Highway, of which in Brookhaven, you had Druid Hills, the Briarwood Road area, and then the area at Claremont Road. And so, you know, we looked at that, and then we also looked at what had come out of the Beaufort Highway plan, because we kind of set back on what we were recommending out of the comp plan vision to see what came out of that planning effort. And that is in the area where they see higher-density condos going in, a hotel with a potential small convention center. It's also an area where we identified a gateway coming off of I-85, going back to that gateway, one of the key entry points into the city. And then, you know, how does it connect with those other areas? Well, you know, one of the benefits of having it an activity node is that you can allow more walkability, you can support those commercial uses and support the areas behind it. And one of the, the key themes that we talk about in the plan is the importance of appropriate, appropriate buffers, transitions, if you will, into those adjoining areas, but at the same time, maintaining that connectivity so that it can become a more walkable community, which is really one of the resounding themes that we heard throughout the planning process.
And as a segue to that, one of the things that was noticed by the consultant for Beaufort Highway, which was Del Jaeger with Jaeger Company, when she actually undertook the study for Beaufort Highway, she actually walked up and down Beaufort Highway, because as you, if you drive in your car, you really miss, you know, what is actually occurring on Beaufort Highway. And what she found was that there was a lot of foot traffic, a lot of unreliable MARTA bus service, there's a, a private bus service, I think, that is occurring. And then actually, just the whole international flavor that is on Beaufort Highway. So, you'll see a lot coming out of the Beaufort Highway study, and, and that has been shared, and Jacobs has, has looked at that. So, all of those factors are working together.
Thank you for your response. I would like to get a list of the transit elements that are of concern along Beaufort Highway. I think we need to be more supportive of our regional systems. So, if this is a message that we can relay to MARTA, I, I would like for the city to take a proactive step in partnering with MARTA to improve the transit service, so that we're not saying it's unreliable. Let's, let's help them do a better job if we are needing to bring them to the attention of what's going on, on that corridor.
Okay. Thank you.
One other thing, the private transit service, I think when you have, and I'm going to speak to the MARTA comment, because I'm a proponent of transit, but when you have people hearing that transit is not great, it doesn't help us transportation professionals create a network of transportation systems in a region. One of the challenge we have on Beaufort Highway is the transit service that was started by a private vendor. Well, when you have a private vendor that's running a transit system, it's hard to plan for a regional system, because you don't know what the private vendor's going to do. So, that is a very complex situation on Beaufort Highway, and I think we should have a list of comments where we can pull MARTA in a meeting, as well as the private transit service provider, to see what can we do to have a more reliable system.
There, there's two aspects occurring there. One relative to the study undertaken by the Beaufort Highway consultants, and what they can do really to aesthetically improve Beaufort Highway, what they can do to encourage more walkability with protection and pedestrian activity in conjunction with the transportation plan. Gresham Smith has been working on the transportation plan and has been communicating with the Jaeger Company, and we have been looking at the DOT plans. And I know that Jamie Cochran with Gresham is communicating with DOT. So, they are all working together on that plan, and your, your point is well-taken, and we will certainly share that information with you.
Thank you.
Shannon?
No questions.
Yeah.
Sure. One brief question. Are you aware, and Susan and Ben may be able to answer this best, of any current large-scale development projects that are in the works that may not fit within what the overall character districts are? Obviously, we couldn't.
I'm not thinking of anything off the top of my head.
I know there's a lot of large-scale multifamily going in, certain areas along Claremont, Beaufort Highway, and, I mean, has anything popped out to you of, oh, jeez, this is going to be an issue two years from now, a year from now, when we go to apply these guidelines to this character area?
Well, I will say that part of what will come out of the Comprehensive Plan is, as you study the character areas and as you see points about infill housing, or mixed-use commercial, or neighborhood commercial, that will direct the city to amend the code. So, we're going to have to go into the zoning ordinance and make sure that we create laws that allow us to enable development and compliance with the recommended land use plan. So, we have some year 2015 action items to undertake relative to zoning code.
There's nothing in the works now that is glaring to you of, oh, jeez?
That is.
Yeah. This is going to be, you know, not in line with what we had viewed for this area in the, in the comprehensive plan.
You mean, as far as a plan that we have in the office?
Correct.
Not that I'm aware of, Ben, or you've worn anything?
Possibly, but it's really hard to say, to be honest with you.
Now, that's definitive. That's what I like. I don't think he's shared that with me yet.
No, I mean, there's, there's always that possibility.
It's unavoidable.
It's unavoidable, that's for one. One thing is, when I'm looking over the, the recommended densities when we're dealing with those character areas that are identifying existing densities, one thing to keep in mind is, it's identifying the existing density applied to that whole area. If we were to break it up into different projects or neighborhoods.
Would never work.
Well, no. I wanted to say possibly the density may be a little bit higher than what is recommended, because, again, we're looking at the whole.
Yeah, correct.
Compared to a single project. So, if you look at it that way, it may, it may not.
Sure. But there's not a plan for a gas station being built in a neighborhood character area right now, right?
Unfortunately, not.
Are you recommending that?
Ooh. It's an area that may be considered something down the road. Okay, just to keep it more curious.
Yeah, no, no gas station.
And one thing I want to point out is that you all are well-versed in this, is that often you have conditions that are put on, on rezonings and development decisions, and what the Comprehensive Plan should really provide, should have some guidance for what maybe some of those conditions should be, because we talk about pedestrian connectivity and green space and access connecting to your streams and things like that. So, that's where the Comprehensive Plan can provide you some of that guidance about what's appropriate to make this development within our code, but additionally, within our comp plan, fit coherently in what the vision is from the community for those areas.
Okay, good. Thank you. I want to make, before I do that, just what's, I want to make sure the people who are here, if, does anybody have a comment? If you'd like to come up, I don't want you to leave, you know, before.
Well, I don't.
And I realize we've been talking, so I haven't opened the, the public hearing on it yet. So, just, who is going to be, who has a comment? Do you have comment cards? I just want to know. Okay. All right. We'll get to you, if you'll sit with us, Betsy. I just, I want to make sure everybody up here has a chance to get, you know, have good dialogue, but I also don't want to lose you all, so. Okay, Jeff, I'm sorry.
No, I'm fine. That's all I had.
Okay. Any? All right. Then I'm going to open up the public hearing to get comments. I just want to make sure that we, everybody gets a chance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Betsy.
Oh, please, come on up and comment. Give us your name and address, so we know you.
I'm, I'm Betsy Eggers, and I'm just so happy to be here, and it's so weird to not have a whole big crowd of people, but I, let me just say that I love the vision that, that you all on the Steering Committee came up with, and I hope that the city will embrace that vision as well. And when we look at what the survey said, as they say in Family Feud, the survey said, I just saw Family Feud, I was part of the studio audience, it was so much fun, it's here in Atlanta. Okay. The survey said, "Make Brookhaven into a walkable, bikeable city," and that's what it said over and over again. And so, to do that, you on the Planning Commission really need to think big. Don't think small on this. Think big, because I am part of a group called the North Fork Connectors, and we really, we have a mission to create a public linear park along the North Fork of Peachtree Creek for walking, cycling, and even paddling. And our goal is to bring together communities, organizations, businesses, and governments to make this a significant revitalization a reality. And a couple of things that you may not know is that the Beltline, have you all been to the Beltline? It's just so incredible. From 2005 until 2012, more than $1 billion in private investment was made in the Atlanta Beltline. So, don't underestimate what the North Fork Linear Park would bring to the city of Brookhaven, would bring not only to the residents who are there now as a park that they can use and be with, but also how it affects everything else. Transportation, getting cars off the street and onto a paved surface that would take them downtown and beyond. Ed McBrayer of the PATH Foundation said at a Georgia park weekend that I went to, he said that driver's license for millennials, people who are from 18 to 25 years old, peaked in the 1970s. When I was a teenager, it was 83% of us got driver's license in that age group. Now, it's down to 63%. Young people don't want driver's license, they want to ride their bike. So, please imagine this park, green space, nature trail, bike path along a river, and picture what cities you've seen it in. And this will really put Brookhaven on the map, and it will give an economic engine that we don't have now in the city, and it will take good planning. We want to protect the neighbors who live there now. And just keep it in mind, and tell all your friends that, that we want to really support this effort. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Betsy. I appreciate that. Do you have any other comments from the public? Well, you can come, you can come up now and give us a comment card and give us your, you can submit a comment card. You have to fight your way through the crowd, but.
I wonder if you're begging for people to come to comment.
You just, do you have a comment? Did you have the comment card you can hand? Just hand them over, just as you're going in, and we'll, they'll take it. And then just come on up. Come on up. That's her.
I'll just put my next address. Okay.
And you are?
I'm Denise Johnson, and.
And where do you live?
I live right behind the MARTA station in Burnwood Park condominiums.
And just hand it to, to Ben. So, that wasn't, that wasn't hard. That wasn't hard. We want to hear you.
I'm also involved with the North Fork Connectors and the linear park. And I, one thing that I saw on the program tonight, which was encouraging, was that there was a reference made to another linear park in that plan, and I, I wondered why that linear park was mentioned, and why another linear park was not mentioned. That was just a question that I had about that particular, because my understanding is that the parks and recreation component of this, as we, was referred to many times, would be the one that would deal with that, with aspects. And I, and I was thinking about that in terms of our project, that that would be in that other. So, anyway, I just saw that up there, and I thought, oh, okay, I wonder why that was, you know. But another question, a broader question that I had, it kind of goes back to what Mr. Levy said at the beginning, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it kind of resonated with me, because one of the things I think that you said was, how is this plan going to help the city, you all, and the city of Brookhaven make decisions? And as I listened to some things, it seemed more like an assessment than a plan, and it seemed so loose that I wondered if it could be really a guideline that would be of much use. Was that something along the lines that you were? That's, it's just an idea that I had as I listened. And I did read some of the things today, and some of the things, especially the best practices, were amazing. They came from everywhere, the best practices did. But I guess I'm thinking, is this a, a plan, or is it an assessment? Or is it? I mean, I didn't come here with any, I'm just, I just listened tonight. That's all I wanted to do, was just listen. And that's, I mean, so much work has gone into this, and I've been to so many of the meetings at Oglethorpe and seeing all of the things that have been on the boards and everything, and I'm just saying, okay, but can we use this? And that's all my comment.
Well, great. Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, after our public comment, we have a, a closing remark from the staff that we'd like to share.
Can I have a closing remark, too?
Absolutely. You're the chairman.
All right. So, we're going to close the, the public hearing section officially, and, you know, I, I cut this off a little bit between, if anybody here had anything they had to do, because I really wanted to make sure that, you know, we had, had a chance for, didn't want them to leave there. But I was a member of the, I was on the Steering Committee, as well as was Shannon Cameron, and you might have to comment on as well. But when I went through the document, which, we didn't see the final document until a couple of days ago, you know, two days, maybe, but we had seen, of course, the drafts, and as everybody else, we were part of all of this and developed it, but I was really impressed. I, I was actually surprised at how much, if you remember at the public, at the open house the other night, I questioned the specificity and said, is it, is it specific enough, and is there enough planned direction? And I was surprised, as I read through there, how much there really was. And I'll give you an example of what I felt, was that just the fact that the word "compatible infill" was used, as opposed to infill. And we have, in the Planning Commission and the City Council, been wrestling with what happens in these residential areas. You have a big residential area, but what does that really mean? It could mean anything from, and, and just the fact that you heard that from the surveys and the other, I was pretty impressed with, you know, I mean, how one word said, okay, now we have guidance, that they don't just want it residential, they want it compatible with what's there. Doesn't mean it has to be exactly the same. So, and there were a number of, of cases in there. The North Fork was mentioned in the, in the plan, which, again, I was pleased to see. So, without going on, I, I think you ought to be congratulated. I, I was, and I was glad I got a written copy, because I can't read it on the, I read it, and it's harder to flip pages. So, I want to say thank you as a member of the Steering Committee and as a member of, as a citizen of Brookhaven. I think it's really come a long way, and again, maybe I shouldn't have been surprised, because you all are so capable and, you know, but I was. Shannon, did you have anything like that? All right. Well, with that, we have comments for you.
Mr. Chairman, I actually believe that Amanda has a couple of things that she'd like to address relative to, this was actually an oversight on our part. We did not share with you the comments from the open house. So, she wanted, they're very short, so she just wanted to kind of give you an update on that. And then, we. And then we probably could take this opportunity to address policy and how this does help the city in action, if you can address that. But if you will.
I think Commissioner Mill is going to have to. But we're here, so we'd like to hear it. Go on, I'm sorry.
But that's it, and then her, I believe Amanda's comments are very short.
Right, so I do want to point out that, you know, we had the open house on, and I'm sorry, I didn't mention this earlier, I intended to. We had the open house on Monday, there were about 75 people there. It was a joint effort of the transportation plan and comprehensive plan. We did not receive any major substantive comments on, on the plan at that point, at the meeting, but we did receive some, some language clarifications that we thought were important because of the subtleties associated with it. So I just wanted to very briefly highlight what those were, and they relate primarily to the character areas, and then there are just a few related to actual implementation action items. So the first is the Blackburn Park character area. We had a comment in there that said a series of the safe and frequently spaced pedestrian crossings are appropriate for Asher Dunwoodie Road. In further coordination with the comprehensive transportation plan, we may have overstated what's, what's appropriate or being recommended there. So we plan to adjust that to say a series of safe pedestrian crossings rather than frequent, frequently occurring. So that's it for the Blackburn Park for Peachtree Corridor Overlay District. We had, in part of the implementation strategies, we had talked about the need to revisit the overlay district to clarify some ambiguity, but also to address some overly prescriptive language, and a couple of community members pointed out that, that perhaps is misleading that we should take out the overly prescriptive, because we want to make sure that that overlay district doesn't get watered down. It's important that the intent of the LCI and the overlay district move forward, so we'll be taking out that overly prescriptive part. The other item that was an oversight on our planning team was specifically referencing the MARTA Transit Oriented Development Initiative in that character area, and so we plan to add that. It is talked about throughout the document, but it needs to be in that specific character area, talked about as a catalyst and, and something to be leveraged by the city. The next area is Historic Brookhaven. We, I mentioned that there are two areas that are not the larger lots. They are gateways into the character district, they're part of the Historic Brookhaven neighborhood, but they have a slightly different character than the overall area, and so we are going to add some language that just clarifies that we don't see, the vision isn't for those areas to expand further into that district, but to just primarily serve as gateways. In the Osborne character area, we had mentioned in the character area descriptions, both pedestrian vehicular connections. That area has several subdivisions with cul-de-sacs at the end, and the intent was not to say that we should connect the, these cul-de-sacs over through Historic Brookhaven to the west, and so we plan to take out that vehicular connection and replace it with bike connections. So that's an adjustment there. We also, a community member pointed out that Osborne, the Osborne character area just listed single-family homes, but we have actually called out where townhomes are also appropriate as a land use. And townhomes actually are considered single-family, but we specifically called it out because it's a higher-density form. So we're going to be adding townhomes to the Osborne character area as appropriate. And then the last character area is the Briarwood Park. We don't specifically reference the Beaufort Highway plan in that character area, but we want to add that, we plan to add that back in, because it is impacted by the planning initiative that was done along Beaufort Highway, and it should be looked at as development proposals come into that area to make sure that it's consistent.
And we just wanted you to know that, because if you see a difference in the language from what you have before you, that's the reason why, so.
There's subtleties, but they're important subtleties to community members.
So thank you.
Okay. So with that, as I said, we just to wrap up, unless anyone has anything special, so the, we are not going to vote on a recommendation this evening to the city council. We will have a hearing, and hopefully we will have more turnout, although I can assume that no, you know, low turnout means that people are listening and watching on video and, or satisfied. So the next, our next meeting will be September the 3rd, be a public hearing here. The next action on the comprehensive plan, though, is what date? It's, there's.
Action or presentation?
Presentation, I'm sorry.
The very next presentation will actually be a work session, and it's with the council, and that's on July 29th. At 3 o'clock, the comp plan will be presented, at 4 o'clock, the Beaufort Highway plan will be presented, and at 5 o'clock, the parts and recreation plan will be presented, and that's a presentation to the council in a work session on July 29th.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I will entertain a motion by, if anybody has anything they'd like to.
I'd like to make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? No, all in favor, aye, okay. Thank you all, thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
I know, that's the only.